Test one, two.
Good evening. I'd like to call this January 10th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, will you all please remove your headgear and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is that in the United States, one nation, under God, in the God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to elect the chair. Traditionally, vice chair goes into the chair position. However, recently, we have, I've had the opportunity to expand my farming operation and don't think that I will have enough time to properly dedicate to the Rockingham County Chair position. So I would like to stay in the vice chair position for another year. And so I would like to nominate Dan Breeden for chair and myself for vice chair. Do I have a second? Or do, I'm sorry, was that Mr. Fulk? Okay, so we have a motion that's been properly made and seconded, that Dan Breeden be chair and I, Jackie Lorbe, vice chair. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We shall vote. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? Great. And congratulations, Mr. Breeden. Oh, discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Since we have, in that motion, unless the clerk knows of anything parliamentary-wise that would state otherwise, the chair and vice chair would have been approved in that motion, so we can dispense with item B on that. Next, we will move to appointment of clerk and deputy clerk. Dr. Scheich?
My recommendation to, is to appoint Pam Bocock as the clerk and Dr. Doug Aldifer as deputy clerk of the school board for the 2022 calendar year.
Fellow board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regards to clerk and deputy clerk. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Ms. Lor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Congratulations, Ms. Bocock.
Yes. I would, next, we will move to select the superintendent's designee. This is an annual thing that we do as well. So, Dr. Scheichel, recommendation there, please.
I do recommend to appoint Dr. Douglas Aldifer as the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. The recommendation is that Dr. Aldifer be the superintendent's designee. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous as well. Next, the establishment of the regular meeting schedule. Those meeting schedules are posted and have been the second and fourth Monday for many, many years. So, Dr. Scheichel, do you have a recommendation on that?
I do recommend approval of the calendar as presented. There is one item that the board may want to discuss. On January 24th, we are supposed to meet. And there's also the Capitol Conference, January 24th to the 25th. So, in the past, at some, sometimes, if board members attend, we've either moved that meeting or board members attended the first day of the conference. But I don't know everyone's schedule for that. I will mention that the Capitol Conference this year will also be in a hybrid format, so it can be attended remotely. And so I just wanted to mention that. And of course, we do have the following Monday available, January 31. So if it's the board desire to move the meeting on the 20, from the 24th to the 31st, that certainly is possible, that Monday is available. And again, it just depends on board members' desire to participate in that conference.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. What I think we'll do is we'll just kind of through consensus determine what the will of the board is with regards to the Capitol Conference. And if there is a need to change the meeting, then in the motion, perhaps, we can amend the meeting schedule to reflect the desires that way. So what are, what are your thoughts, ladies and gentlemen? I, I will not be able to attend. I can say that much.
I think because we have a virtual option as well as an in-person, I, I would suggest that we will, we want to go, we could go virtually and be able to keep the board meeting presently on the 24th of January.
Yeah, I work fine with me.
I had originally contacted Ms. Bocock to, to schedule, and that's when I found out that the meeting was at the same time. So I had, I had expressed interest. So thank you, Dr. Scheichel, for bringing that up with the board. But with the farming schedule now, I don't think I can, I can go in person. So I think I'll be attending virtually. So I'm, I'm great staying with the night that we've got, the school board meeting.
Sounds like I've heard unanimously that, that those who would wish to attend would attend virtue, in a virtual manner. So with that having been said, the superintendent has made a recommendation with regards to the regular meeting schedule, and the chair will entertain a motion in support of that recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous as well. Next, we will move to committee appointments. There are several standing committees, as board members most are aware anyway. And if I could, I'd ask Dr. Scheichel to go over the recommendations on those, please.
Yes, for returning board members, we've not changed. So for Dr. McQuilkin and Ms. Lor, the committees that they served on last year, my recommendation is to keep those the same. And then the committees that Ms. Reed was on were divided up. And so my recommendation is to appoint Mr. Cross to the Shenandoah Valley Special Education Regional Program Committee, Mr. Fulk to the Extension Leadership Council, Dr. McQuilkin will be on the Massanutten Governor's School Board, Ms. Lor on Massanutten Technical Center Foundation Board, and then Ms. Lor and Mr. Breeden on the Liaison Committee with County Board of Supervisors, and then Dr. McQuilkin, I will serve as the Rockingham Educational Foundation Ex officio member.
Thank you. And I guess the only thing that changes is, Matt, you, you're being asked for, for that one. Are you agreeable to that?
I, I look, I read over this and I talked to, to Mr. Scheichel a little bit before over the weekend about this a little bit. So I'm excited about this.
Good.
About going forward and, and doing this position. So I don't know what it all entails yet, but I look forward to working in this capacity here.
I think you'll enjoy it. I've had an opportunity to serve on that board before. Okay, so sort of lost track of myself. Ms. Bocock, have we had a motion at this point? I don't think so. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the committee assignments as read by Dr. Scheichel. Chair will move to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That completes our annual organization. At this time, I would like to call to order the public hearing with regards to the 2223 school operating budget. Do we have anyone who would, we don't have anyone signed up for the budget hearing, but I would offer the opportunity, if anyone would like to speak to the budget, to please come to the podium and identify yourself if you would like. Seeing nor hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the school operating budget. And we will move next into public comments. And we do have one person signed up, and that is Nancy Bassett. Ms. Bassett?
Chairman Breeden and the rest of the school board. I'm the president of the Rockingham County Education Association, and we just wanted to take this moment to welcome Matt Cross to the school board and to say that we're looking forward to working with you as well as all of the other school board members.
Mountain View?
No, I work at Monta Video, and I used to be at Spotswood.
Used to be at Spotswood. Okay, I, I recognize you. And so, thank you so much. It means a lot for me to, to you say that, come here tonight and welcome me here on this board. And, and thanks for saying that. It means a lot.
We're looking to, for a good year with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do. That completes the list of folks who had signed up for public comments tonight. So we will move to board member comments, and I will begin as a, as a welcome. Mr. Cross, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. And again, thanks, thanks for your welcome here tonight. I know, over the past eight, nine months, it's been quite a ride through this whole election cycle. And it was Mr. Fulk that kind of lit the fire in me to want to run for school board, although years ago, as serving as a school resource officer, I'm, I, I desired to be in this position, and I desired to make some effective change according to our safety and things that we do in the public schools. Working for the sheriff's office, I knew I could only do but so much. But having the opportunity to sit in this capacity here in the county, I feel like I could have a better opportunity to be able to keep our students and staff safe. And I worked for almost a decade in our schools. I worked in three of our four, four school districts. And I'm, I know what we need to do when it comes to our safety. I know what needs to happen, things that we're not doing, that we should be doing. And so that's what led me to want to run in the first place. And then, I think it was back in February, when Mr. Fulk had said his comments about the passing of Rush Limbaugh, and about conservatives in our neighbor, in our, in our county, that really got me stirred up to want to come and to speak. And I did at a J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. I came and I spoke, and I talked about what conservatives believed in, and I talked about, I'm, just how insensitive those comments were. But it did something to me. It, it made me want to run and make a difference. And I'm not here tonight to, to hash up those things, Mr. Fulk. But we've never had the opportunity, even though I've reached out to all of you to talk about these things, we never had the opportunity to talk about it. So I'm not here to hash those things out. But when we say those things as leaders, they can be pretty insensitive. And when I looked, when I look at our community, we are a community that are majority conservative people here in Rockingham County. And when I looked at our board, I didn't see that full conservative. I didn't see that amongst our board. And that made me want to run and made me want to reflect our values in Rockingham County upon our schools and here, where I grew up, in a place where I love, and a place where I worked. And so that's why I chose to, to run for school board. And I'm happy to be here. I'm looking forward to doing this position and, and, and being the best leader that I can be and working with the four of you. I've reached out to all four of you, and I will continue to reach out to you. And it's, it's not a pee-in contest when it comes to me. I, I want to work with you guys to make our school system, our division, the best it can be in the state of Virginia. So I am pleased. I'm, I've, I've sent you all emails. I've reached out to you. Thank you, Mr. Breeden, for responding to me. And I'm, but I, I'm here to work together when it comes to that. So with that being said, thank you for welcoming me to the board here tonight. I'm, one thing I do want to bring up is, I'm, I want to highlight tonight, I'm, one of our teachers that, that passed away during our Christmas break or before, Mr. Chris Frazier, at Turner Ashby High School. I had the opportunity to work with Chris, and he was a great guy. He was a wonderful human being. And he, he came at a time at Turner Ashby High School where it was needing some leadership in our, in our football department there, in our varsity boys department. And he came at a tough time. Anytime you know that when you're a coach and you come in and, and out, and a coach had been established and been there for so many years, as Coach Newman was, it, it took Chris some time to be established. And it took time for the students to want to buy into his program. And he faced that the couple of first years of his teaching career and coaching career out at Turner Ashby. And had the opportunity to sit down with him and go into the, his class and to the gym during school hours when I worked as a school resource officer there. And I got an opportunity to know him. And Coach, and if you can hear us tonight, thank you from the bottom of my heart for the investment that you invested into our teens, into our students here in Rockingham County. I'm, he will be highly missed. It's hard to replace someone as quality as, as Mr. Frazier, Coach Frazier was. Coaches play such an awesome role in our school system, and he's going to be highly missed. And so I'm, I also just want to say before I end there is that thank you to Mr. Phil Judd as well and his staff out at Turner Ashby High School for taking care of the students and the staff and the personnel out there during this tough time. You guys have done a great job. I've heard from other staff members out there, and I'm just so appreciative that during this time of, of trial and heartache, and that they were there to help our students through this tough season, especially here at Christmas time. So I'm, just keep Mr. Frazier's family and your thoughts and prayers. And I'm, thank you, Coach, for all you've done.
Ms. Lor?
Thank you, and welcome. I look forward to working with you to, to make Rockingham a great place for all of our students. And thank you for your kind words about Coach Frazier. I also want, we've lost far too I also want, we've lost far too many people. And I need to mention that we also lost Nellie Ritchie, a pillar of the agricultural community and a special ed teacher in the Broadway area. So please, please remember all that have been lost and keep their families in your prayers and thoughts. But I want to talk about highlights, too. We've got some great stuff going on as well. Right before Christmas break, Broadway High School did this really cool event, I guess, a day. The last day before break, you know, when most kids are checked out anyway, they had a do it yourself day. Or I guess it was DIY. I guess that's what DIY stood for. But they brought in people from outside, from the community, and like taught yoga class or taught how to fix your chainsaw. I was able to participate with the FFA and do sausage making. And we packaged over 325 pounds of sausage for the Broadway FFA as a fundraiser. So yay! So that was quite an event. I'm quite proud of our kids. We had several student mentors that stepped up and really took charge of it, and I was very proud of them. And then another pretty cool thing, I feel like cool, you're going to get that in a minute, that happened. Friday, we had a snow day, and I picked up the phone and called our superintendent, as you do. And I heard this weird noise in the background. Like, what are you doing? He said, I'm at Lacy Springs shoveling snow. Where else do you have a superintendent who goes out on snow days and shovels snow? So I thought that was pretty cool. So I would like to thank him personally for taking care of our schools and our students. So yay! And those are my highlights for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. My first highlight has to do with Peakview Elementary School. Mary Harder is the librarian there, and Mary organized a bucket load of items that her students put together, goody bags and cards, and they took them to the hospital and they handed them out to over 500 people working at the hospital. And I think that we need to highlight Mary and her students for all they did for the workers in the hospital. My second highlight has to do with thanking all of our staff. You know, I'm sure you all know that we are short on substitutes. In many, many, many days, our current staff is called upon to work and work extra and help out and cover classes. And I want to say thank you, thank you to all the staff who have taken their time to work in the other people's classrooms so that our students continue to have an education. Our goal is to keep our students in school, and the people that take their time to substitute deserve our appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Falk? Thank you. Dr. Schike?
Welcome, Mr. Cross, to the school board. It's good to have you here. And so I hope we'll find lots of time to work together on educational topics in Rockingham County. In terms of what Ms. Lor said, I appreciate the comment, but this is something that isn't just the superintendent. So I will also mention that the two assistant superintendents, Doug Aldifer, he worked at Central Office to help the custodian with snow removal, and then Larry Shiftlet was moving snow out of South River. So just like with Central Office staff members helping the substitutes in our schools as needed, again, as we have, you know, staff members out for various reasons, again, everyone's trying to pitch in. And again, that applies at the schools as well, of course. When I was at Lacy, you know, there were a number of other people there as well helping our schools. And then related to that, I want to thank Jeremy Mason and his staff, you know, for always making good recommendations in terms of how we should proceed in terms of school openings. I know this morning Jeremy was out on the roads at four o'clock to determine whether we had any issues with the refreezing after the rain yesterday and the low temperatures overnight. And so that's his routine, right? And so there's always a lot of work that goes into that with VDOT recommendations and, you know, consulting with other school districts in the area, what they see and what their recommendations are. And so I want to thank Jeremy for all the work that he and his staff are doing because our school bus travelers, of course, you know, we want to make sure that we feel they can safely transport students to and from school. And then in terms of a school highlight, just as actually a reminder, this Saturday at 3:30, the City-County Honor Band will perform at East Rockingham High School for those who are interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. I hope that everyone had a wonderful and safe Christmas and New Year. And I hope that as we continue into the second semester, that we can continue to find ways to work better under difficult circumstances. And, Mr. Cross, I'm sure you would agree that to each thing, there is a season. And the campaign season is over, at least for 18 months. And so my recommendation would be that we not campaign from here, but that we work together to keep Rockingham County one of the best school divisions in the state and the country, which it already is. But that doesn't mean that it cannot be improved upon. There is opportunity. I think it's important for our staff, for our students, and for our communities to see us disagree on substantive policy issues. But the personal stuff has a personal place. And I think we can, as we have in the past, continue to share that individually with one another. And I just look forward to the opportunity to continue to work together. I can tell you that I have been blessed to work with many great school board members, none of whom has worked any harder than the one sitting to my right. And I look forward to continuing that process as we move through. And we can do great things as we continue to do, and I look forward to that opportunity. Disagree where we can, agree where we can, and always keep in mind that it's really for the best interest of the kids. And I think we're all there based on the conversations that we've had. So thank you, each of you, for your comments. Next, we will move into action items, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or comments or additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Bills and mileage for December of 2021?
As Ms. Mastwood always remind us, it's a good idea to pay the bills. So I do recommend approval of the December bills and mileage as presented in your materials.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. We have a recommendation from the superintendent with regards to the bills and mileage for December. Do I hear a motion in support?
I so moved that we approve the bills for December 2021 as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item C under action is adoption of Civil Rights Assurances Policy ACA.
Again, Mr. Breeden, this is an annual adoption. So every year, the board is asked to adopt the Civil Rights Certificate. The Civil Rights Certificate is, provides assurance of compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, and the Age Discrimination Act of 1975. And I recommend approval of the Civil Rights Certificate as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. Again, this is an annual process that we undertake each January. The chair would move to accept the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. High school course offerings for 2223. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Chair Breeden, board members, and Dr. Schike, at the last school board meeting, I proposed a list of high school courses for the upcoming 2223 school year. Tonight, I ask for your action to approve those courses.
I do recommend approval of the course offerings as presented.
I move that we approve the course offerings for the 2223 school year as presented.
Question, Cheryl, is why are we ending the masonry out of MTC? I know that they had been talked about, but I can't remember what to say.
Yeah, the masonry program over the past, I would say, 10 years has shown a steady decline in the number of students that are enrolling. We were down last year to about, I think it was eight students program wide. So what we've decided to do is actually combine that as a unit in the carpentry program. We're seeing that a lot across the state because there's a lot of skills that are taught in masonry that are also taught in carpentry, the measuring skills and that type of thing. So that's the plan to kind of replace that. We're not totally doing away with it, but we're just kind of combining programs.
Out there this year, low as well?
For masonry, extremely low. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's just been around for a long time, so I was just wondering why that was going to be taken off there.
There was a history, actually, that program was discontinued a number of years ago. And then we brought it back and changed some things. And enrollment just never, we never filled that program up, and it's a shame because it's a good skill. But again, I think that, I think the plan that we have to include it in carpentry, I think that'll still expose students to it, and hopefully will meet the needs of their community that way.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
That is unanimous. A bid for the storage building at the maintenance complex. Mr. Reed?
Dr. Schike, Mr. Breeden, members of the board, we had a bid for a post-frame metal-covered storage building at the maintenance complex. This building is designed at 36 feet by 120 feet, has three overhead doors and three walk-through doors. The building will be shared by Maintenance, Transportation, Special Ed, and Testing. We sent the bid to three packages, or three firms. We had two firms respond with a sealed bid. Our recommendation is to award the contractor the low bidder superior buildings in the amount of $147,440.
And I recommend approval of the bid as presented by Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Reed and Dr. Schike. Do I hear a motion in support of this recommendation? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion or questions of Mr. Reed?
I have one question, and it's really, I think, more for our clerk. And I can't remember from my recent COYA training. I do business with some of these people that bid on it, so do I need to abstain from this vote? I'm just going to go ahead and abstain from this vote, just to be on the safe side. So.
I think the question you would need to ask yourself, Ms. Lor, would be whether you would stand to gain financially in any way from?
I shouldn't, but it has to be totally above.
Got you. And that's your right, but that's kind of the rule of thumb to look at there. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. If there are no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. Four in favor. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, that concludes our action items for this evening. We'll move to information items. Item A is the plan for creating the 2223 school calendar. Dr. Shiftlet?
Before Dr. Shiftlet presents, I would just briefly update the board on what I had asked Dr. Shiftlet to draft. As you know, a couple of years ago, we had talked about providing more opportunities for teachers to collaborate across the curriculum to make sure that as we implement more project-based learning opportunities, that teachers have that time to meet. And at the time, we worked through a pilot process, you know, at TA that was supposed to go into effect. And of course, COVID short-circuited that, but that would have provided an extra hour a day. Since then, again, as part of our Learning 2025 project, we've had conversations with other school districts in terms of having the benefit of, you know, doing some things differently when it comes to a number of different issues. And in our conversations around the calendar, we said, you know, it's difficult for families, obviously, you know, we talked about this back then, to have that one hour every single day that they would have to find additional childcare for. And so another approach that Mr. Shiftlet will present is to basically designate some additional days for teacher collaboration. So professional learning communities, days that are built in. Now traditionally, we've had a calendar that had 183 days with three bank days. And as you know, the state requirement is to either have 180 days or to have 990 instructional hours. Because of the new state guidelines that permit the unscheduled remote learning days for inclement weather, and because we've removed most of the early dismissal days, we've actually added, you know, a number of instructional hours. And so what we talked about is adding days for teacher collaboration throughout the school year. And, you know, we did this fall, for example, we gave three days back to teachers. Now these became days off, but in the future, to use some of those days for collaboration. So this is a calendar that only has 175 days in it. But again, when it comes to the hours, because of the removal of the early dismissals, it actually creates a sufficient cushion, just like the previous calendars did with, that included the early dismissals. And so this is a little bit unique, and that's why we wanted to make sure that before we go down that path, that you have a chance to see a proposal like that. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Shiftlet, to Dr. Shiftlet for all his work that he put into developing that calendar and to present it to you.
So thank you, Oscar, for that sort of background information. And so this evening, Chair Breeden, members of the board, I'd really like to kind of like to walk you through sort of a timeline of trying to get our calendar prepared for next school year and to give you an opportunity to look at a starting point, a draft calendar, really before we send it out to folks. Now typically, if you'll recall, you see the calendar sometime in February, and you get it for information. Everyone else has looked at it. They've given their input. They've said what they, you know, they would like this day or that day. And then you get it for information, then two weeks later, you vote. So we decided to come here first tonight to say, hey, here's a draft, a starting point. I think you have this in your folders. As Oscar said, with 175 instructional days and to have some dialogue and conversations with you folks tonight. Make any changes or tweaks or revisions that the school board would think would be appropriate. And then I would like to share that out with our faculties and staff and communities in the coming days. Gather feedback, asking our principals to gather feedback from their faculty, staff, from their parent groups, and then come back here in February and present it as a draft and then get approval later in February. Actually, the 14th Valentine's Day would be the day we'd be here with the information on that calendar. So that's sort of a timeline. So I don't know if you've had a chance really to look how much time you've devoted on this calendar, but as, again, as Dr. Schike will say, there's 175 instructional days, which is typically, you know, less than we normally schedule in our calendar, but we've added in some additional workdays. And what we've tried to do is place those strategically in the calendar so there aren't these long stretches where students are in school for maybe five or six weeks without a break. But there's like a lot of Fridays, three-day weekends for students. And so, and again, there aren't any early release days at all in this calendar. Now I may suggest that we put one in there for parent conferences, if you would so deem appropriate. But there aren't any at midterms. There aren't any at the end of the year. But we're hoping by going those full days, we can then maybe take some days off the calendar and give us some flexibility. So I welcome any comments or questions from the board about the draft and would be willing, again, to make some tweaks or revisions if you feel like that would be appropriate.
Biggest question for me is, we're starting out to the fair, right?
Yes, sir. Actually, on a Wednesday on this calendar, just the way it played out. Now, I can remember back a number of years- Now, I can remember back a number of years ago, probably in my early teaching career, we started school there for a few years on a Thursday. I don't know, folks, yeah, Ms. Lore's shaking her head, right? And so we started Thursday and we went two days, had a break, and people seemed to like that. This would be a Wednesday start, which I think would be ideal in some ways because we could bring our pre-K in for Friday. And then they would be off on the weekend. So could be a way to acclimate them to the, to that. It is after the fair. That's a very good question. And I, and I don't know, I know last year we worked real closely with our colleagues in Harrisonburg City since we share MTC. And my conversations with them early on, I think they are more inclined to start earlier than we are. They're not as, you know, worried with the fair as, as much as Rockingham County is, and that's understandable.
Oh, you know, I'm going to ask for it. You've already said it. I like a Thursday start. I remember that Thursday start. I would like to advocate for that. I feel like it's just great when you bring your secondary students in for an odd day, an even day, and then they have the whole weekend to get anything they need, and then they can hit the ground running. But I do very, very, very much appreciate the Wednesday start instead of the Monday start that we've had. So thank you for that.
Right. And again, to clarify, we started this year on a Monday. We typically do not do that, but we, Harrisonburg started earlier and we wanted to match them as closely as we could. And also just to point out, just on, on this calendar, and again, we're not voting on this. This is just a starting point. We have spring break matched in this calendar with, excuse me, with James Madison University. We did that this year with Harrisonburg City. Whether or not that's a good time for spring break, we'll get some feedback from, from teachers and from faculty, staff and parents. But that's why that break is there in March. And then there's a long weekend around the Easter, the Easter holiday, that Good Friday and Easter Monday.
Other questions at this point for Dr. Shiflett? If there are questions that any of you think of, you can feel free to contact Dr. Shiflett. And if there are any things that, or if there are things that take root from those suggestions, he will share them with the, with the remaining board members so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah. And the only change I think I would like to maybe suggest is this year, and we've been doing this for a number of years. We have an early release day in February, and then we have a parent conferences that evening and the next day is an in-service. And so if we would stay in line with that on February the ninth, would be the only early release day I could see us using unless we wanted to, you know, try to put a full day in there. I'm just not sure I would want to do that. So I don't know your thoughts, but.
Again, if you, if you think further about this and you have questions, feel free.
Absolutely. Love to talk with you about it. Yep. Thank you for your, thanks for the input.
All right. Next, we will move to the superintendent's COVID update. Dr. Schike.
Chair Breed, members of the board, as you are likely aware, over the last week, a week and a half, we've received new guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and from the Virginia Department of Health related to quarantine and isolation guidelines for COVID. It's interesting, of course, this is a shortening of those timeframes that it does happen in the middle of a surge. But there's some very good information about why CDC decided to move forward with that and what research it is based on. And so I want to provide you with an update related to that. So I'll talk a little bit about, you know, what we're currently seeing in the numbers, the impact that, of course, having students out for longer periods of time has had on mental health. We do see a change in the disease pattern. That's important to remember. And then we'll talk about, you know, the mitigation strategies that are in place, right? Vaccination is available now to all students five and older. Masks continue to be a discussion point. I've said this before, you know, one of the key pieces is that people stay home when they're sick. There are new treatments available. And then again, I'll go over those new guidelines. So this is as of today. So for the first time today, the 14 day count of new cases in Rockingham has exceeded 1,000. And so if you look at the chart, you know, it's almost, it can't be, you know, vertical just because it's moving over day by day. But it's as close to vertical of a line as you can get. And so this mirrors what we've seen statewide. This mirrors what we've seen nationwide. And it also mirrors what we've seen in other countries. So the new variant certainly has led to dramatic increases in cases. It has led to those waves being a little bit shorter because it's going up very rapidly. When that peak happens, it's expected to also come down pretty rapidly. Now, when is it going to come down? Yeah, this isn't the line that we expect to turn tomorrow or even next week. This is on the left hand side, you see the UVA prediction model. They've been pretty accurate over the course of the pandemic. And we are where that circle is. So if you look further on the left, last December, that was last year's December-January spike. And so the most likely trajectory is the one in blue. This is for the Harrisonburg area, Harrisonburg metro area. So including Rockingham County. Look, prediction looks similar for the state. If you look on the right, that's the trend for the entire pandemic. Again, you'll see there's one line that goes up last December. This was really in January. So we reached 9,900 cases on January 6th, I believe, last year. And then the second highest ever up to this latest surge was 7,000. And the average for Virginia over the last seven days is 15,000. And a couple of days ago, we reached 26,175 cases in a day. Now, again, that's based on how many tests are done and how they're reported. So that's why the seven day average is important to keep in mind. But when talking about a seven day average of 15,000, and the highest number for a single day even previously was nine, and then the next highest, seven. So this is, this is a trend that's obviously concerning. So we have to make sure we understand that, right? This variant, and this is what it looked like in many other countries before that variant got to the United States. We also have to remember, right, that schools are one of the safest places, if not the safest place for kids to be. And the reason is that we can mitigate. We have the tools available to make it safe. There is an impact of having schools closed. So I've had a couple of questions today. Why aren't you closing schools? In fact, early on in the pandemic, we saw this in Singapore, you know, the recommendation before actually in the US that came shutdowns, the, the rule there was a school closing makes sense if the community that's around, that if the community itself is shut down, but not in isolation. Schools should be the last institution to close and the first one to reopen, again, because they can be safe. And because of the impact on education, we reopened our elementary's early last year, you know, we were mandated to shut down 2020. And then we again staged our reopenings. And so as we felt safety could be assured, you know, we went to three feet distancing before CDC and VDH recommended it because we had the information that CDC and VDH had. It just sometimes takes them longer to move through the process and then make the recommendations. And so, and by the way, the article here, Closing Schools Won't Stop Omicron, it'll just hurt kids, or Monumental Tasks, How to Stay Open Amid the Surge, those are both from the Washington Post. So again, this is from, from the Post where you couldn't say that they, you know, have advocated throughout that schools always stay open, right? But there, there's some good information there. And then, you know, Pew Research, the mental health effects. And we see it in our schools, obviously, of having these long closures. And again, when students are isolated, then there's certainly mental health impact. So it's a balancing act. You know, how do we keep staff and students safe in school? How do, how do we prevent the educational and, and mental health downsides of having kids at home? So having kids in school uncertainly is important. When we talk about the vaccine, it's pretty clear, this is that changed disease pattern to some extent. So if you look at these three lines, the blue line, the dark blue line is, and Virginia tracks by vaccination status. And this mirrors what we've seen in Canada. It mirrors what we've seen in Europe, in South Africa, and in many other states. The dark blue line, fully vaccinated people, this is from January until now, from, once vaccines became available last year, January 17th. Partially vaccinated, the light blue line, and then the yellow line is unvaccinated. And so even before the line was higher for the unvaccinated population, this is in terms of just infections, right? Who gets infected? And we do know plenty of breakthrough cases, but when you look at the data, it's overwhelmingly driven at that, again, that vertical line are the new cases by vaccination status. And so driven overwhelmingly by those who are not vaccinated. Hospitalizations, very similar, right? So the dark blue line, it's close to zero. And every week I'm in city county leadership meeting, and so we talk to Centerra because we know healthcare is seeing the impact, right? There are hospitalizations. We see an increase in hospitalizations. And in the past, during the other waves, you know, they would say it's, the vast majority are unvaccinated. Now the line is it's almost exclusively when it comes to hospitalization. There are some encouraging signs in terms of how this latest variant works for many people, especially for those who are vaccinated or those who have recently had COVID. The, you know, previous infections, they've, they've waned. This is one of the cases where an infection half a year ago provides very little protection. And vaccination also, again, the booster shot changes protection, you know, many fold. But when you look at the fatality rate, so people who have died, and the numbers are about the same over the whole course of the pandemic. It's about four times, four times as many people per 100,000. You have to adjust. So you're looking at the same size population. Four times as many unvaccinated people end up getting it, end up being hospitalized, and unfortunately end up dying. And there were some good signs for a while. And this latest line just happened, you know, over the last week where you see the yellow line also going back up. We've seen some deaths even in our community. So four people died this weekend. But for a while, you know, those numbers have been coming down for all groups. And that is important to, to understand, right? So when we look at the Delta surge and then the summer surge and then that the surge prior, all the way through December, fatality rates have come down. And that is, one of the reasons has to do with treatments that are available. And again, that this variant in general tends to lead to a less severe form of the disease. And especially, again, when you look at a full vaccination status deadline is, is pretty much, it's not exactly zero, but it is as close as it has been. Because you saw it much higher even for fully vaccinated earlier. When we talk about a vaccination status, when we're talking about school population, right, so for five to 11 year olds, this is fully vaccinated, 18%, 12 to 15 year olds, 38%, and 16, 17 year olds, 44% approximately. And then college age population, but also some of our older high school students, you know, seniors, 47%. We lag the state in double digits, so 10 to 20% less than the state average. Now, the reason we feel confident that school is a safe place for students, we've made many efforts to have mitigation in place. If you look in this chart on the right, for example, these are standards for air exchanges per hour. The one that I find interesting is hospital patient rooms, four to six. Right now, once you're talking about an isolation ward, it's different or surgical suite, but hospital patient rooms, four to six, right? For elementary schools, 2.8, for older students, 3.5. We had a consultant work and with Mr. Reed and his staff through every school and every room to get to five exchanges an hour. And that's why we deployed the blue HEPA air purifiers. We've, you know, run these. We made sure that they don't have to be run at a higher level than, than medium to, you know, make sure we limit how loud they are. And when you look at the chart on the left, this is from Harvard Public Health, based on the research that also included that chart on the right. At five exchanges an hour, you're there at that excellent level. And five is the minimum that we want to reach, right? It's, it's higher in some cases, in many cases, but five was the minimum. So it's shown, you know, outside that the risk of infection is much lessened, that good ventilation helps. There's always been the story about, you know, stay away from poorly ventilated spaces in people pictured classrooms. That's not a poorly ventilated space. Poorly ventilated space would be a bar or a concert, you know, with 5,000 people indoors. I showed this before, mask compliance. So UVA by Complexity Institute ran the simulations. At 50% mask compliance, you can see that cases tend to go lower, right? When you increase that to 90% mask compliance, it is lower than with 50%. No surprise there. But again, what I've always found most interesting is that, that there are three lines that are below that. So that means what's the biggest impact? It's not, the masks don't have the biggest impact. They tend to have a positive effect. But the biggest impact is staying home when you're sick. So those are the lines when people isolate after one, two, or five days even of symptoms. Now, this is not for the most current variant, right? These simulations are UVA Randys last year. But I found that particularly interesting because if, you know, again, the more we talk about safety, we have to talk about staying home when you are symptomatic. But there is really good research on masks. So the largest study done, and there are dozens of international researchers that participated in this. There were more than 300,000 people in Bangladesh where there was truly a randomized study where they had 20% or so mask compliance, or it was even less, I think it was 13%, yeah, 13% mask compliance. And so they left that alone. And in other villages, they threw variety of efforts, they increased it to 40%. So they basically tripled mask compliance in those communities. And then they looked at, and they used different types of masks. And so what they found was, for example, even getting to 40% mask compliance from 13, infections decreased by 11% for the blue surgical masks. So those disposable masks. Cloth masks didn't do as well. Obviously, you know, then 95 respirators do particularly well. That doesn't mean there, there's only an 11% effect because we're talking about 40% mask compliance. But there is an effect in masks. And, but again, when we look at other mitigation strategies like ventilation and vaccination, obviously, and then staying home when you're sick, you see the biggest effects in those. There's also, again, a lot of new treatment available. So we, we have the antibody treatment. And then one that I found interesting at the top left here, they found that when people tested positive, if they provided, early on, they provided nasal irrigation, irrigation with saline. So you have, you know, some of these machines that, that can basically put saline solution, there are sprays as well. And they added iodine or some other ingredients to it. I saw a 19 fold reduction in hospitalizations. So it's some of the things that we really don't talk a whole lot about. And there was a study, this was in Georgia. And there's another one in Edinburgh where they said, you know, again, we can look at saline as one of the environments where viruses tend to not do as well. And so they wanted to investigate that. And again, there were additional ingredients here, but that's important to know that you can, even if you're infected, that with some of these methods, Navage was one of them, and then another one that, that they used, that you can actually reduce your chance of severe disease, right, by that. Then also the FDA, just emergency authorization for an antiviral pill from Pfizer. There's another one from Merck. In the Pfizer trials, 85 to 90% reduction in hospitalization and death. And this was an over the counter pill that people could get at, at home, that they could take at home and take it when they develop symptoms and are, and are positive. And what's interesting in that trial, so they said 85 to 90% reduction in hospitalizations and death. But when you actually look at the clinical trials, there was not a single fatality. So in the clinical trial, it reduced mortality to zero. And so again, that's been approved for emergency use, and they expect by mid to late January that that will be widely available. And, and then UNC Charlotte did a study again, over the course of the pandemic, as these variants emerge, what's the benefit of natural immunity, right? Because there is some, there, there's clearly a benefit to natural immunity. But in this particular case, I believe, previous infection with a previous variant reduced the benefit of, of previous infection. For Delta, it was still at about 70%, and I believe it's down to 19%. So that, that's important to understand as well. And so that's why the timelines now have shortened for how long a previous infection is, is used as an exemption, for example, to quarantine. And so here are the new guidelines. It's important to know the difference between isolation and quarantines. Isolation is for people who were, who tested positive or were diagnosed as positive. Isolation is for people who were who tested positive or were diagnosed as positive. Quarantine is basically to prevent someone from from getting it. And that's if you're close contact, now you're in quarantine. So we can wait and see with isolation, we already know you have it. And so that's just the distinction there. Previously, those timelines were 10 days. So for isolation, you tested positive or you had symptoms. It was the next day is day one, and then it's 10 days from the day after either the positive test or the start of symptoms and whichever comes first. If you had symptoms and you only got tested on day four, it doesn't start then, right? It started with when you had your symptoms. So that's day zero and then day one starts there. And the justification for the reduction is that in the CDC guidance, they pointed to research that indicates that 85 to 90% of cases that are caused by transmission from someone else, obviously, happen in the two days prior to the onset of symptoms and the first three days of symptoms. And so after that, even though a PCR test, you know, can find viral particles for months at times, that the risk of infection drops fairly quickly. And so in that trade off of, you know, and then what does that require to keep people safe? You know, for that remainder of the risk. But the vast majority of transmissions happen in those, again, two days, pre symptomatic and then the first three days of symptoms. And so as a result, they shorten that to five days. In order to return after those five days, there can be no fever for at least 24 hours without medications and symptoms must have resolved or significantly improved. And so when we talk about that, right, it's it's going to be that this isn't work that the community needs to help us with, right? We can't say, yeah, my kid's better. What does that mean? So if a student still comes to school, then coughs and sneezes, and we don't really see a significant improvement in symptoms, then that can be extended to the regular 10 days that it was previously. But again, if the symptoms, and in many cases, symptoms do significantly improve, then certainly isolation can end at that time. For quarantine, it's the same thing. So that would be a close contact. And then quarantine can be for five days as long as no symptoms are present, right? So you can't quarantine and then you got it on day four. All of a sudden you develop symptoms, you can't come back on day six, right? So then, you know, there's a decision about whether that's now a positive case. And so again, five days. And again, that counter starts on the day after the last exposure. And it's important to remember that if people, for example, have multiple cases in the home or the parent has it and the child can't separate, you know, for the parent, that doesn't end on day five, right? The parent's isolation, they may be able to go to work, but the child's still considered a close contact until day 10. In the past, we had to keep kids out for 20 days. So the 10 days for the parents' isolation plus the 10 days of quarantine. So now that will become 10 plus five.
So is that a VDH or is?
Yeah, there's both CDC and VDH. So VDH, once the CDC guidelines came out, VDH then specifically provided a little bit of an abbreviated version of that guidance for schools. But all of this is in the CDC guidance as well.
So but if a kid is, if a child is vaccinated, they can come if they have no symptoms.
Yeah, I'll I'll get to that.
But if they're not vaccinated, then they have to do stay out, correct?
But even with vaccination, it depends on what, because if you're vaccinated, you can still get it, right? So
And spread it.
If there are no symptoms, there are a couple of rules. I'll I'll get to those. What is an exemption from a quarantine? There's no exemption from if you're vaccinated and you test positive, you're still going into isolation, right? Because obviously, that's a breakthrough case. So the trade off here, it's a shorter timeframe. But when it comes to masks, day six through 10, it's even more important that appropriate masks are worn correctly and consistently. And so that's also in the guidance for day six through 10. That's important, right? That also applies to times when otherwise there wouldn't necessarily be masks. So for example, outside or athletic activity. If the shortened quarantine is applied by isolation, masks are required until the traditional 10 days moreover. And of course, in our environment, we still have universal masking. Again, schools have to work through that, right? So if masking on day six through 10 is important, we can't have students who just came back from isolation or from a shortened quarantine not do a good job wearing their mask. So schools certainly, again, have that authority to say, you know, if that student is refusing to wear the mask appropriately, then it has to be the 10 day quarantine. With athletes, it's a little tricky because when you have a, when we have the quarantine piece for athletes, again, that just means the student was a close contact. We don't really know if that student ended up positive. I mean, we assume they didn't because they remained without symptoms, right? So it's that shortened quarantine. So we can allow athletes that are in quarantine and have no symptoms to return to athletic activity after day five. But if you think about isolation, right? We've said, well, a positive case, 85 to 90% of the time, it gets transmitted during those first three days of symptoms. But there is residual infection risk. And so for athletes who are who actually tested positive or were diagnosed positive, we still shorten the timeline a little bit. We would let them, again, if symptoms have improved, they would have to wear masks during practice, during games. But they would actually be able to come back on day eight. For our schools, go through a COVID protocol, that's a three day protocol. And so that would be non contact activities. But then on day 10, after day 10, they could fully participate again in the activities. And again, because for athletic activities, masks are not required. But until those 10 days are up for athletes, they would still not be able to compete and participate in contact practice for 10 days. And they would have to be fully masked up until that point. And so who's exempt from quarantine? That goes to your question. There's no exemption from isolation. So you're positive, you're positive, right? That you're gonna stay home, doesn't matter whether you're vaccinated or not. CDC guideline for, and CDC actually adjusted this a little bit. For adults 18 and up, the exemption is fully vaccinated plus a booster, okay? For 18 and older. So for adults, it's fully vaccinated plus booster. And for 18 year olds, it's as well. CDC originally also said that I believe 15 through 17 would have to have a booster. But they moved that back to say anyone up to age 17, an exemption from quarantine is fully vaccinated. So both doses of the Pfizer or Moderna shot or, you know, some of the other options. And of course, that's only if there are no symptoms, right? So again, if you have symptoms and you're considered infected, then of course that changes to isolation. Again, like I said before, you know, masks continue to be important. And it's important to remember that there are a couple of pieces to masks that, you know, we had a conversation last time about it. What point could masks become optional? We're in the middle of a surge that's not even, you know, a third of the way there potentially. And there are a couple of things to remember. One, on transportation, the masking requirement will remain at least until March 18th. So the CDC order on masking in public transportation currently is set to expire March 18th. We don't know if that's going to be extended. It's also during high community spread, getting rid of the masks would simply not be feasible. First, there is that additional benefit to it. But you also have to consider what happens if students wouldn't wear masks. Right now, we can have all kids in school because they're fully masked and at three foot distance. If masks are not worn by a student, the quarantine distance goes back to six feet. And if you think about a high school student, right now, we have something like 37 high school students out as active cases and across the four high schools. Think about this, one high school student, if you go to six feet, all the students in the classroom around that student are now close contacts because the mask wasn't worn. You multiply that by eight classes, you could have 64 kids. Now, if we then look at a 47% vaccination rate, you end up for every positive case, you'd have to likely quarantine 35 kids, right? That's the impact of one decision on others. So if one student that that student tests positive wasn't wearing a mask, 35 other kids now have to be quarantined, it'd be 64. And then again, vaccination is an exemption. And when it comes to natural infection, it has to have happened in the last 90 days. So if that's another exemption to quarantine, by the way.
Mr. Superintendent, it's important, it's important to notice, though, that some of these are going to change when a new governor does come in. And so you're pointing to some old CDC guidelines, which Governor Yonkin will come in and change some things and leave it up to local school boards to make these decisions in which you're talking about this evening.
Yeah, what Governor Yonkin has said so far, Governor-elect Yonkin has said so far is that he's inclined to remove the public health order. So the public health order requires masks in K through 12 buildings universally. So there doesn't even a discussion, right? It's masks need to be worn. If the public health order comes down, it is up to local school districts to decide whether masks become optional. What Governor Yonkin has not said is that VDH guidelines for quarantine distance will change, right? So that's a different process. Obviously, since we had a 10 day quarantine, you know, up until the end of last week, and now it's changed, changing guidance always changes what we consider, right? But at the current point, there is no indication from Governor-elect Yonkin that the VDH guidance on what the quarantine distances will change, right? That's a different process and that involves public health officials. It it gets more complicated when it comes to employees too. For employees, there's a, we don't know yet how the Supreme Court is going to decide on the federal mandate. Virginia is an OSHA state, so that would apply in Virginia if the Supreme Court approves it. But it's also the Department of Labor and Industry. And there's currently a permanent standard that employees have to wear masks. So for employees, that would remain. And that process isn't simply by the governor declaring it that employees don't have to wear them. There's a process that has to be followed. It involves a particular timeline. And so again, I don't want to overcomplicate it, but absolutely. If VDH guidelines changed, and that's a different conversation, right? But that's not
We are expecting them to change.
Well, that's, again, Governor-elect Yonkin hasn't indicated that. What he said was that he's inclined to remove the public health order because that's done by the Public Health Commissioner. And that mandates the masks. But that doesn't go into any of the public health guidelines in terms of what distance, you know, at what distance people need to quarantine. So that's what we would have to wait for.
Absolutely. And we remember those are, those are guidelines, not laws.
Yep. Absolutely. But it's again, like we've previously said, and of course, that's a local school board decision. But it's also a guideline that comes from public health officials, right? And so, but if that distance remains and Virginia Department of Health quarantines kids at six feet, that's what it lead to, that's my point. We have looked at test to stay protocol. At this point, not particularly helpful because, and there was an update later in the day today. But when we talked to VDH, the test to stay pilot would allow us to keep kids in school if they test every day, so negative test every day. But it only applies to close contacts that actually happened at school. And so the vast majority of our cases where students are quarantined aren't because of close contact in school buildings. The vast majority are, you know, at home or in other social settings. And so test to stay would affect a small number of students. VDH has, there's some inclination that they're going to expand it. Still not to household contacts. So again, we'll have to wait and see whether that could help with it. But at this point, these are the existing guidelines. Of course, again, as they change, those would be discussed here. But it, that's important to remember, right? So if quarantine guidelines are what they are now and masks come down, this would be the effect, right? Obviously, with everything, we have to wait what the legislature does as well, right? So but under current guidelines, this would be the effect. Okay. Any other questions from board members?
Mr. Shaka, I just wanted to say that thank you so much for 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 coming here and giving us an update on that. And I, like I've told you before too, is, you know, we've all been living through this for the last two years. I mean, we've, we, we all get our news, we all give, we all find out what we believe in. We all look at the data, we look at it. And we probably every single one of us in here probably disagree on something when it comes to this. But I think the greatest thing that we can agree on is that we need to get these masks off these kids as soon as possible. And that needs to happen right away because it's not good for our children. It's not good for their learning. It's not good for for their emotions. I mean, everything that we're seeing going on, Brown University did a great report on the cognitive learning of children on this, on wearing masks being one part of it. But we need to do it, we need to get these masks off the kids as soon as possible. And we understand that Omnicron coming has visited us. It came and visited my family just not too long ago. And it was a lot weaker of a virus than what the original COVID was that that we got as well. So I am, at some point, we've got to come out of hiding. At some point, we've got to get the mask off the kids. And we can come in here every month and and give an update on on COVID. And we're all living it, like I said, every single day. But it comes a time when this board needs to take a stand and say, we need to get these masks off the kids and let them be kids again. I heard a quote by a psychiatric, for a child psychiatric here recently. He said, never in society have children, have, have, we ask children to protect the adults. It's always been the adults protecting the children. And COVID doesn't have the deadly approach on children like it does adults. And we need to get these these masks, I'm looking at the board when I say this, we need to get the mask off our kids as soon as possible, right away, and not leave it up to to everything else that's going on. We need to make the decision, once we're able to do that, and take the mask and make them optional for parents to make the right decision for their kids and for their kids' safety. And that needs to happen right away. That's just my opinion on this.
I would say what I would agree with is that we can take masks off once it's considered safe, right, for everyone in that classroom.
And I think, and I think our, and I think our, our issue of safe is going to vary of what what we believe in.
Sure, you could have a teacher who's pregnant.
What's that?
You could have a teacher who's pregnant.
Absolutely.
High risk of COVID hospitalization.
Since you said that as well.
Yep.
It it's terrible when when our teachers are scaring our kids and they're saying things like, if you don't wear your mask correctly and over your nose, then I could get sick and pass this on to my child and my child could die from it. That's the kind of stuff that we don't need to put on our kids in public schools. And so you can sit there, you can say that what about the the pregnant teacher? What about our kids, we're putting this condemnation and shame on them for not wearing their mask correctly? And we're sitting there, that's, that's wrong to do and we need to take the mask off them.
Yep, public health officials and epidemiologists would disagree with you on when it is safe to take off masks. And so again, I will continue to recommend following public health and expert advice.
Well, and I think your expert advice varies as well because the expert advice that I listened to as well would say the exact opposite of what you said tonight.
I have a question. It's really complicated and there's a lot of ifs and thens. Who is enforcing this?
Who's enforcing?
Like, so my kid tests positive tomorrow, who do I talk to?
Yep, typically, the parents call the school, right? So that's a conversation typically with the school nurse. And they have the protocols. And so then there's a question of if the student is, for example, a close contact in the home, can there, is there separation? So is the, if the parent, for example, is positive and the student can't be separated, then quarantine starts when the parent's isolation is over. And so the the school nurses and administrators have these protocols. They call us if they have any further questions. If we have questions, I have access to the regional VDH director. I just had a meeting with her today or VDH enrichment. So the protocols, like because it can get complicated, right? Because it depends on the individual circumstances. Sometimes you have one family member who tests positive, others have symptoms, right? Physician will say, well, that's, that's a presumed positive based on the symptoms and based on the timelines. And so again, there are a lot of different components to that. And and most importantly, right now, is to understand that the timelines have changed, but that those timelines are in effect with certain requirements. And so with a shorter quarantine, a recommendation of five days come additional, again, requirements of consistent and correct mask wearing.
But our, our nurses are on our front lines.
Absolutely. We had a meeting last Friday where we spoke for quite a while with our administrators. These came from VDH with our administrators, with our school nurses and walked through everything, right? And nurses have questions. And so we talked through it and again, where we need advice, how to handle certain situations, rather than we have access to epidemiologists at VDH.
Can you please convey my deepest thanks to those nurses? And maybe if we can do something nice for them, that would also be super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Shaka, would you speak to me for just a moment on, do we have a person or persons in each building who who we feel has an in each building who, who we feel has an adequate understanding of these guidelines so that they are enforced equitably and consistently throughout the county? I, I have to confess, sometimes when I'm sitting here and listening to it, I, I, I feel like I'm chasing an electrical issue. If A does this, then check B and check C if that does that. And, and so I'd just like to know that we've got people who have the understanding of it that you do.
Yeah, same, same answer as to Ms. Lohr. We work with our, the health plan changes, you know, they go in draft form, nurses have the ability to comment on them, administrators do. We work through all those as a group, and then that's finalized. And so, yes, the, the health plan obviously is available on the website as well, but nurses and administrators are probably the most knowledgeable about the particulars of it.
Good, good. I, I would, I would just also have to say that many, many times in this role, you, you take information that you're given, and sometimes it's conflicting information, and you make the, the absolute best decision that you feel like you can make. And I have always been one who would err on the side of caution if it means keeping kids and staff safe. And I, I have to confess that I'm fearful that just a blanket removal, and I, I don't like the masks, I would, I'd rather not have them here, I'd rather not, my seven-year-old granddaughter have to wear them to school every day. But, you know, I, I have to, I have to look at it and say, if I'm going to be consistent in my concern for the safety of not only the kids but the staff, we have to, we have to err on the side of caution. And, and that's based on the best information that we can get, weighing both sides of the information, those who disagree and those who agree, and then you just have to, you just have to make a decision on where you are. And, and, you know, once, once these guidelines change and the governor-elect does what the governor-elect does, then this board will act accordingly, I feel certain, on, on what it, what the majority of this board feels is, is the best way to go. I, I've never sensed anybody running from it. You know, we've just tried to be, we've just tried to be as cautious as we can, and if we're going to make a mistake, let's make a mistake on the side of keeping people safe.
Yeah, I would say from the very first presentation before we reopened, right? The first slide was always, can we reopen schools safely for staff and students?
Right. Other questions or comments for Dr. Shike? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Board members, you have in your packets a, an attendance report for December and a financial review for your information. If you have any questions on that, you can talk with Cheryl Mast or, or Dr. Aldifer, if you have questions on those. Next, we will move into school board questions, and I will begin with Dr. McQuillen.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I said earlier in my opening comments that I believe that we want to be able to keep our schools open. If you look and read the newspapers, you'll find out that in many states, there are schools that are not open. Our schools are open, we would like to keep them open, and we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that our staff and our students and everybody involved is as safe as we possibly could make it.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Mr. Falk? Thank you, sir. Ms. Lohr?
First question, I think, do we have any high school students here with us tonight? Yeah, look at you all! Yay, thank you, welcome for coming, or welcome and thank you for coming, that's where it goes. And I hope, I hope you guys have enjoyed it, and I hope you're learning something. So thank you for coming. And then I, my other question, and I want to provide them their privacy, so I'm going to look at Mr. Cross, but I think your family is in attendance tonight, and I want to give them their privacy, so I'll look at you. But thank you for, for sharing, thanks to your family for sharing you with us, and get used to lots of nights with frustration and things that we can't talk about, but really want to talk about, and especially your children. Thank you for, for allowing your dad to serve.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Lohr, for saying that. I appreciate that, and I look forward to serving on this board with, with all of you. And as I said at the very beginning, we, there'd be times that we will disagree, but I'm, I'm confident that we can work together for the betterment of our community. And Mr. McQuillen, you, you mentioned there about keeping our schools safe, and that's absolutely not what I'm suggesting when I, when I make a suggestion that it should be in the parents', it shouldn't be the parents' option whether they mask their children now when they go to school. I mean, we've been going through this pandemic now for two years. We know what's going on, we know the results of what's happening, we're dealing with a, with a COVID virus that's right now, that's not, nowhere as strong as where it was when we first began this. And it should be left up to parents to do the right things for their children, because parents know what's best for their own children's health. The President of the United States doesn't know the best, your governor doesn't know the best, your superintendent doesn't know the best, the school board doesn't know the best. But for the kids that are in here, your parents know what's best for you and for your life, for your life. And so I want to give parents that option, whether to mask up their children when they go to school, and it should be left up to them there. I, I pulled this off as some statistics there, Mr. McQuillen, it says that I, over the course of the pandemic, 49,000 Americans under the age of 18 have died of all causes. According to the CDC, only 331 of those deaths have been from COVID, less than half as many as have died of pneumonia. In 2019, more than 2,000 American kids and teenagers died in car crashes each year. According to some estimates, about 1,000 die from drowning. So we're talking about, you have more of a chance, our kids in the United States have more of a chance to drown or die in a car accident than what they do to die from COVID. And it's time to take these masks off our kids, and it'll give that decision back to the parents. And that's all I'm asking, is that we make that decision to give that opportunity, to give that freedom back to parents and say, here, you do what you believe is best for your kids, because I believe they know what's best for their kids better than I do. And so that's all I'm saying tonight. I, I thank you, Mrs. Lohr, and for the kind words that you said. I thank you, Mr. Breeden, and Mr. Falk. I, I look forward to working with you as well for the rest of your term here on the board as well, and along that you decide that you're going to run for, and Mr. McQuillen, the same way towards you. I look forward to working on this board and, and doing the best that we can to continue the excellence here in Rockham County. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Shike?
Pass.
Thank you. I thank you all again for being here, those students that are here. If you need an agenda signed or something right after the meeting, we'll be happy to facilitate that for you. You know, I, Mr. Falk's father used to say, I think I'm quoting him correctly, that if we agree on everything, one of us is unnecessary. And, and so we're, we're going to have our disagreements. And unfortunately, a lot of young people do die in car crashes, and I guess that's probably why we don't let 13-year-olds drive, because maybe, maybe they don't know. And I know that as a parent and as a grandparent, I have often had to seek the advice of people who are experts in fields that I'm not an expert in, whether it's medical help for, for my child, or whether it's educational opportunities for my child, or, or whether it's spiritual help for a child or a grandchild. I've had to reach out and talk to people who, who perhaps know more and are trained better than I am. And so I will continue to look to those people who, you know, who, who have the training and the knowledge to, to supply me with some input to do, to do what is hopefully best for, for everybody involved. It's never been easy. I remember one time I went to a meeting at Elkton Elementary. We were debating whether to move the fifth grade to middle school or, or leave Elkton Elementary overcrowded. And I sat in a public meeting with a group of parents for about two and a half hours, and at the end of the night, I said, now, let me just get an idea of where we stand. Can I get a show of hands? How many people think we ought to send the fifth grade to the middle school? And hands went up, and I counted them. I said, how many think we should leave them here at the elementary school in this crowded situation? And hands went up, and I counted them, and it was a tie. So we had to, we had to make a decision. And so half of the people were going to be displeased, and half were going to perhaps, perhaps be, be pleased. But that's the situation that we find ourselves in, and we will, we will move right along and do the best we absolutely can, agreeing when we can and disagreeing when we must. And I appreciate all of your all's patience tonight. We have some architects, I think, to interview tonight. So we do have reason to enter into closed meeting, and I will entertain a motion to that regard at this time.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting for the purpose to discuss or consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees, for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation, and A29, to discuss the, the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including presentations, as part of interviewing several offers, as well as to discuss the possible, wow, discuss the possible award of a contract and authorization for such related negotiation regarding architectural services, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Is there a second? Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. The reason that we have, for those of you who attend school board meetings regularly, the reason we have that boilerplate motion is because law is very specific as to what we can discuss when we're not in the public view. And when we go into this session, we can only talk about those things that were mentioned in the motion. And, and so that's, that's the reason that that has to be that way. It's not that we're, somebody else is doing our, our work for us, it's just that those are very specific, and we have to, have to stick to those. And even beyond that, as has been referenced before, we cannot discuss it with anybody at home. So it has to stay just within the board here. So motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor of entering into closed meeting, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is 5-0. Thank you, and we will take care of the agendas for you guys, and thank you all, be safe going home.